Thank you. All right. Call them a special meeting of the Board of Selectmen for Tuesday, May 7th. Twenty twenty four to order at four thirty P M. No time of meeting was changed from the original posting is four thirty then. Okay, any public comment on our agenda items? We have any public out there? Then Harrington's here. Okay, no comment, hearing no comment on the agenda. Is there any more? Is there anyone who wishes to comment on the agenda? Yeah, okay. Here and then we move on to approval of resolution amending the Kent Streetscape Improvements Resolutions to actually use town funds instead of bonds and calling of the town meeting. So. And a motion to waive the reading of the resolution. Okay. Second, I'm second. Yep. Okay, second glance. Okay. Well, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, all right. A motion to then approve the the resolution as it is read. Or as it is stated.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
Okay. Second, I'll second that second. Okay, any discussion?
Yeah, I have a question. So is it as simple as taking one point eight million and dividing it by seven? Is that we would pay, we take two hundred and fifty seven thousand dollars out of the undesignated fund? Am I saying that right?
Okay.
To be able to pay off this each year?
That is the plan. That is the plan. Yes, I thought I remembered. Okay. It it was actually two sixty, but if it comes out to two fifty seven, it is what? You know, it's just over that many years, and that's what our expected expenditure. Is going to be so.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
The just to to clarify again, it was the number that was a one point seven million that will come eventually out of undesigned. To be divided over seven years of approximately two hundred and sixty thousand dollars per year. In case you didn't catch all that, that was the question that was clarified by our treasurer. All right, any discussion? All right, all in favor of the resolution sending it to the town meeting?
Aye.
Okay, all right. Any opposed? Then, okay, all in favor that goes passes. Great. Okay. Then out there will be on the seventh. Okay. We have a motion to go along with this, the town meeting, to create a new capital project called hazardous tree removal or trimming for nonutility related hazardous branches, limbs and trees on municipal property. Within a municipal right of the way pursuant to Connecticut General Statute seven dash five three five through seven dash five three eight and Public Acts twenty three dash one twenty four. Appropriation of this capital project shall be twenty thousand seven hundred ninety two dollars and thirteen cents for F Y twenty four and be reimbursed by state grant funding as authorized through the Losip Grant Program for fiscal year twenty four, twenty twenty four and forward. Funds will be distributed through by June thirtieth and report will be due for municipality or borough by one September. We'll entertain a. That such motion for the town meeting? It's moved. Okay, second. Great. Any other discussion?
Yeah, I I happened to see Bruce Bennett this weekend, and he was unaware that this had gone through. I was surprised.
That he's doing their, this is the.
I know, but he was unaware that we were moving forward on this. I shared it with him later. But it was just surprising to me that he wasn't. Nobody had, nobody had told him that we were doing this. Yeah.
Told who?
The Bruce Bennett? The tree work? Yeah.
Who usually interacts with them, Rick?
Uh, Rick or or myself, yeah.
Rick knew about this.
Right.
But I didn't know Bruce Bennett, is he the one that contracts to have our trees trimmed and removed?
He's very involved in the process. Because he's the one who decides which trees are the or should come down with Rick. Gave a presentation at the library on Saturday where I learned all about what he does.
Oh, that's a good question.
I just, I don't want to make sure he's looped in, that's all.
Yeah, we will make sure he's looked at it. I know we have, and then some of this is on, well, municipal property and so on in the right of way is is the tree trimming for which nonutility, obviously, but he's pretty much looped into all of that. I mean, we did talk to him.
Actually came to me because he already knew about the Losip.
Right.
Increasing it for the trees and giving towns extra money for trees. This was back in the fall.
Yeah, we had. I'll talk to.
One of the requirements that they changed the process that Losip is operating under. So now, instead of us doing work and applying to get reimbursed, they're just issuing the funds to us. So. If the italicized piece of that box about the enabling document, and that's where the instructions are that this has to be part of our capital plan. So that's directing what we're doing here.
I see that, Rick, you're on. Have you, Bruce is aware of this. I thought he was aware of what we're going to be doing with trimming. I thought we talked about that last spring.
Yeah, he knew that we had to get in the capital plan. I don't know if he was aware that the motion got put in the other night, but.
Okay, well, that may be.
And we've been talking about it all along while we're making up the list of the hazard trees, so.
Right, because he was identified. But well, that's a good point. We'll make sure that he is aware of this as well. I'll send it to him. But I know he had talked about it because he came in to talk about the plan in the capital plan for removing the trees. Now, whether he was aware of the, you know, the actual motion, I'm not sure. That would be a good one. But we'll, we'll go through that, so. Okay. All right, but I'll make sure he isn't aware. Okay, okay, all right. Except the motion, except the that motion.
We, we, we just.
Or, okay, that's right, we did. Sorry. Hey, everybody want to make a motion to vote the motion? Sorry. All right, all in favor of the motion for Losip. They pose not unanimous. Okay. Our next motion again. This is do an increased capital project called Town Hall Air Conditioning Parking Lot Generator Boiler by forty one thousand four hundred twenty five dollars to be reimbursed by state grant funding as authorized through the Losip Grant Program fiscal year twenty twenty four and forward. And this is the same condition that all funds maybe dispersed by June thirtieth and report by one September to the state.
So moved.
Okay. Second, second. All in favor? Any discussion?
Well, I, how did you guys come up with this? Is, I know you were coming up short on the for the generator boiler.
So the state dictates how much we get in Losip money every year. So we get a little. Allocation sheet that shows what each municipality gets. So we typically get forty two thousand plus minus. So when they added the state. But to the treatment to it, they didn't tell us what the split was. So amongst ourselves, we felt that anything above our normal. Appropriation for Losip is going to be tree money and our regular appropriation is the rest of Losip. That's just the balance of our regular appropriation. So it's not what we decided we needed to have X Y Z dollars. In that, it just so happened to work out very conveniently because, as I said earlier, they've changed the process. They're distributing the funds. We didn't have an allocation for those funds in this year's budget. So. The work, the motions that the board of finance made, you're making that will go to the town. Facilitate all that to get it in the budget so that we can spend it.
Okay. All right, thanks. I appreciate that, understanding that.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
So these items are going to be on the town meeting?
Right. Yeah, they were, yeah, they even brought up for the.
You weren't shared the agenda.
You have the agenda?
It's not in the shared folder as of this.
Town Hall Agenda?
They, for the town meeting on May seventeenth, this is all going to be on the same meeting, right?
Right, May seven, the May seventeenth, special town meeting.
Yeah.
It's there, believe me. Yes.
The resolution?
No, the actual, this was the agenda.
The agenda.
This is.
I did not see that today. I looked, I looked this morning.
I could do a moment. And I just wanted to point out. Do we have to sign, but? Seventeenth, seventh. That's the only thing we added to that, to what was on there, and then you have a new one I see as well, is that we had a discussion of the debacle or not debacle, what's a heavy presentation or heavy. Attendance by people that caused us to delay the the actual meeting date to seven thirty something. We need to stay on time for what is warned as a meeting. That's what we were informed yesterday. So. So we talked to the red service this morning, Darlene, myself, R O Vs and so on, and Joyce, and we discussed that the best thing to do would be to. Open up the doors. And I kind of put that in Friday, you know, at the last minute that we had to make some adjustment at some point. And to do that, to follow up, we've had that that meeting discuss opening the doors of the town hall at six o'clock, allowing people to get in. Hopefully, we'll have a crowd again, not thirty people. But and we're going to change. So I will today, this afternoon, once all this is approved, you guys approve the opening of doors at six, which is why we put it in here as the agenda. It's, you know. I think it's the thing to do, but I just wanted to make sure that you guys are all aware of it and it's part of the agenda that we actually open the doors at six.
Makes sense to me.
For all of you that we're going to do, what we're going to do is we're going to open the front doors for everybody to come in. That way we can process more people through that parking lot, right? More light out front, except for those that are handicapped or need special assistance, they can come inside door. So we'll do, I will put out a note tonight. Another one. Oh, yeah, I know. Absolutely. Well, they're gonna, you know, but we'll have, the registered is going to have people at both doors, just to handle those that come around. We're not going to have a big issue with it. Hopefully, it'll be enough, you know, people understand it, or they'll see folks in the front door. But we're going to open, and then that will allow. Everybody be processed through, and then from now on, we'll start figuring out whether we go A to M or A to L and one, and, you know, or M to Z and another, and but we wanted, we figured we'd give this a shot and see how it is. Anyone that comes in at the end will be processed in, but we will start at seven because votes, this is going to be different votes for each other, different motions, right? So hopefully, people that really want to be there for the time will understand, and then will know. So, yes, the education process will be on. Facebook, it'll, it'll go on and everything. I'll send a note out tonight. I'll send another one on the Monday, and then probably another one on Wednesday, just again to remind everybody, doors will be open, front door, you know, and we'll have people out there. Five will be out there, six anyways, go that way. But I think it'll be helpful because we don't want to, you know, have people standing outside when we're in the middle of of discussions and so on. So I think it would be a good idea.
Yeah.
So there's the the agenda. I can read it if you'd like. Go and do that.
Why don't you just read the topics?
Okay.
It's long.
Yes, it is long. Okay. I'll read the beginning of it just to go into the record. Anybody who's listening, it says, the electors of the town in Kent and those qualified to vote in town meetings are hereby warned and notified that the annual town meeting will be at Kent Town Hall, forty one Kent Green Boulevard. Connecticut on May seventeenth, twenty twenty four at seven P M. Town Hall doors will open at six P M. To verify voter eligibility. This meeting will consider and act upon the following agenda. And the topics are the landscape or the streetscape resolution. Trimming hazardous tree removal is part of our Losip program, increase, increased capital project called the Town Hall Improvements, Air Conditioning Parking Lot Generator Boiler, et cetera, Losip Program. To authorize the board of selectmen or other town officials in accordance with a Kent policy and procedure manual to apply for, accept and expend funds. And the grants for limited to the town aid road, which we have to do for twenty four twenty five. Authorize the Board of Education or the town officials apply for and accepting and expend funds for any other federal state grants that they get for their educational purposes. To appropriate from reserve fund for capital and nonrecurring expenditures and amount equal to the expenditures approved. In the fiscal year twenty four twenty five comma, the five year capital plan. So approves the capital plan, the education budget, the town budget, our Losip funds, and our streetscape resolution. So that's what we're going to do, the cut find your capital plan, and it will be to consider and act upon the recommendation of Board of Finance. Of the elements of the budget itself, which has a board of selectmen operating budget, transfer to capital fund, transfer to dog fund, appropriation, the SCADA local legal project. Debt service appropriations for current cap capital projects and Board of Educational Operating Budget and the Region One Budget, which is is part of what we do in our education budget for the town. And that total would be a consideration for the meeting at fifteen million, six hundred ninety nine thousand, two hundred and forty five dollars. And and we finish up with our our standard. If there's an ADA requirement, let me know, and we will work with you to get you into the meeting safely. That is the agenda in a nutshell. Or maybe a couple of nut shells.
So we need a motion to approve.
Approve the.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second that. Thank you. Any discussion?
I know this is not our bailiwick. But I, after the hearing, I went and sort of did some calculations based on old tax rate, new tax rate. And. I, I, I think, I really hope the Board of Finance considers taking some undesigned money because we have a lot more than two hundred and sixty thousand dollars in the designated fund.
Right.
So we can afford to do that. It's like two point, isn't it two, over two million dollars?
Oh, and.
In the undesigned fund?
Oh, yeah, we have, yeah. I think it.
I think we gotta do that. People are going to get hit. Some people are going to get hit hard.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Tax increase.
Yeah, my tax increase. For sure. Yeah, that.
I know it's not our, it's.
It's not our bailiwick, but yeah, I'm hoping, well, again, I know the Board of Finance had that discussion at first, but they can go back and and make that amendment.
They really didn't talk about it, though. They really didn't even, every year, every year they go through and they play around with different numbers. They have it projected up on, they never did that this year. They never ever played around with, yeah, they made a reference, but they never actually said, how much money do we want to use to?
I don't know if it was because they were, they had only have four people, except they're majority for the meeting itself.
I think it was because people didn't really do the calculations and, oh, the mill rate's gone down. You know, they didn't actually go and compare versus the past revow to this, you know, the past assessment.
To this revow and then.
The new assessment with the revow.
Percent what will actually increase.
I don't know. I don't know how we navigate that.
Well, we can, I mean, encourage people to ring that up. I, that, that's really, that's what I tell people. If you haven't felt you've been heard, you still have time to be heard at the the meeting. I mean, that's it. And and that question can be asked if the, and that's not a bad question to be asked, to direct ask to the Board of Finance. Have you considered, you made reference to it, and they did, it was really quick.
Yeah.
And they were moving, trying to move that seven hundred thousand around. I'm not sure they really understood what exactly how that was, but that's my point of view. But if they won't. Think that the Board of Finance really needs to have that specific discussion. They should ask that during that meeting. And at that point, it's not their meeting, but they have a meeting right after us.
Right.
To set that, which they can, yeah, they can do that. But they will be there to listen to that as well.
Okay.
Yeah, encourage people. Yeah, and that it it's good. It's encourage people to talk about that. I have, I think it's a good, not a bad idea.
All right.
What do you think?
That's, sounds good to me.
Okay.
We have ears.
Okay, yep, and 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 even at the meeting, yep.
Even at the meetings.
They, will they make any kind of presentation, or is it just answering questions at this point?
It's answering quite any questions that come up in the moderator room.
Who's the Dino?
I don't know. I haven't heard who wants to step up to that. There doesn't appear to be anyone to be at the meet, you know, yeah. Got the note out, we'll see. I'm trying to see, you know, Lori or or Steve with this time. We had Chris last time, and I think that's fine, but I think. Lori or Steve had a chance. I know Steve last time wanted to to say something or wanted to be listening in case he wanted to to vote and all that, but I don't know. Which one would be interested in that. That's the other thing. When we're done with this, we'll get more people to to participate in training. So we were looking at moderator training the other day. Yeah. So. Any other discussions or comments on the agenda itself? Okay.
I hope they're going to have an example.
Oh, yeah, yes, yeah.
Or in your, in your information that you send out prior to this, if you could explain, this is how you calculate.
Exactly. People need to hear that.
Right, and that's. It is not self explaining.
It is not, right, no, it isn't. And, and, yeah. We were going to do that in the budget that she updated today. I didn't look to see if it was in there. If not, we will replace that with a formula across the top. Here's the current budget. Here's if you want to.
Yeah, but you should send it ahead of time because it's not something people can really.
We'll, yeah, that will be in our, in the middle as well. So I'll give us, after this meeting, our treasurer, and we'll put that in. Good point. Okay. Any other comments or questions on the agenda? All right, all in favor of the agenda as presented?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, all right, approved. All right, don't forget to sign it before.
I'm sorry, that's.
Okay. There we go. Okay. Transfer station, the schedule. But, okay, all right, as we move to that, we have H R A here.
Tiffany and Jen or just Tiffany?
Uh, Jen was supposed to come in. She was on her way back from Maine. We totally seem to get her on the road. But Tiffany is 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 here, and we had a a long and descriptive involved meeting on Monday. But and I think we, we looked over some more of the programs. I think you guys have seen them all. If you need any more, we can, we could put them up. With the ones that we're, we're discussing, everything is a is ability to be moved, numbers and so on, right? And you've already said you looked at some. So. First thing, though, is is the letter. Tiffany, do you want to explain the letter that we we need to do to go along with this?
Sure. So the S M M grant came with some milestones that had to be hit to keep the funding triggered. The first one was the letter of intent that you would discuss a plan for putting unit based pricing and food scraps. Collection as in place as a plan for permanency. The, that particular milestone is due on the fifteenth. That particular letter, I actually have a rough draft of it, is very high level. Saying, yes, we intend to continue move forward with our food scraps collection as a diversion. And we are going to continue with our unit based pricing, starting with the new fiscal, town fiscal year.
In a nutshell, that's the letter that they're offering to us that pretty much lays, and it lays out on the backside some financial figures that we're requesting to help for the program, the educational program, communication program, and so on. As part of the.
Maybe that's what we should call it, enforcement officer. Maybe more people would apply.
Well, we went back and forth on that when it attended.
Jen has has some creative ideas about how to label that. It is an excellent way to get you some additional staffing. That's being funded by Connecticut Deep. While we're still in the in the pilot phase, regardless of which model you decide to go with. I will say. I would think that they're being positively inclined to approve a request for bridge funding would be that we incorporate in our letter for plan for permanency. That this is mandatory this year, that those users of the transfer station will either pay some sort of day rate if they show up with. How, whatever program you go with, not in compliance, or they will be turned away. They, they will have to understand when they purchase a permit that this is what the program is and how it works.
Right.
Whereas during our pilot, it, we know, was more of an opt in that was presented to the public, and we will do copious amounts of. Education before the start of the new permit year about that.
Right. We usually had two thousand outreach education. We increased that to four.
Yeah.
Yeah, because we thought we needed.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
There's lots of play in that room for what numbers we plugged in. We just put those in during our discussion as, you know, potentials. Not certainly our recommendation, depending on, you know, what model you decide to go with. I have a bi weekly check in with Connecticut Deep. They did inform us that what we had assumed was the the other pilots that have since dropped out. The funds that were earmarked for those pilots, we thought stayed in the pool for S M M pilots. Connecticut Deep has said we're coming up to the end of their, obviously, fiscal year, and different departments are trying to grab at that funding. So they gave us two, what we took as signals. That if we do, we should probably put the request for bridge funding in with our letter of permanency. And that the quicker we do that, the less likely those funds are going out the door to other departments within deep.
Okay. So in the discussion we had, and then, Rick, I'm going to have, let you speak to this a little bit. We, we looked at all the different types of of programs we had. And we, they're all in there for, you know, to, for you all to look at. We kind of came down to what we thought would be both implementable and and manageable. And we kind of went back and forth on the ranking. Rick had a chance to talk to Rob and and talk about other things, you know, getting on the perspective of people that have been on the the ground, actually, at the transfer station for long term. Manning issues and so on, which we know we can get some support from that, from the, from the pilot program. But. Something that's sustainable, you know, something that we can do and not change again, but go back and forth and so on. So we went back and forth. So first, we kind of liked. I mean, we were looking at the punch card issue, but then that really would maintain or require someone to be at the the front checking every bag, making sure that they have your three bags, you get three punches, you have two bags, you get two punches. But making, and that would allow you to have any kind of bag you wanted, any color, or someone is not, you know, stipulated by bag color. As much if we had a third person to do that, might be, you know, enforceable, using the enforcement term. But I I think we all kind of think that that's, there's just too much issue with forgetting a punch card and so on, and to make verifying that they do have a punch card, we could have a master. It just gets a little bit more complicated for the two people or even the third person if we had someone there. You were part time on a Sunday, part time on a Saturday, whether we shortened the Saturday time and moved it to try to get something during the week, which we consider, and and how could we make this portable, no matter where we went? Rick and I sat outside in the sun today, again, this afternoon, and Rick, and I'll let you pick it up from there, what you think. Maybe the the best way for us to go forward based on your comments, you know, what would Rick want to think is sustainable and what we. Think we want to move to to actually have some, a real unit based pricing that is fair for people in that, in that we can, you know, again. Go through all the things that Tiffany and Jen did with us, and the numbers, we went back and forth on all kinds of numbers, so.
And Jen has joined the call. I think she said she's waiting to be admitted.
Was she? Okay.
There she is.
Yeah. Actually, she's in, she's just.
Sorry, I'm here. Peak conversation. I'm so sorry.
Okay. Do you have anything you want to add then, Jen or Rick?
Well, I would. For now, we can always change it sometime in the future, but. Go with the colored bag system. We've got people started on it this year, so. That way we can just. Continue to sell on the bags. And if somebody doesn't like the colors, they can. On the way to the transfer station, take their black bag and put it inside that, whatever color we choose.
Right, they have to have the colored bags. So with the two proposals we had, the twenty four twenty five and then twenty five twenty six, with no deep funding bags included with the permits. You want to generally, or Jen, you're back from Maine, huh? Do you want to talk at all, or Joyce, even you, because, you know, the administration, you were looking at the the actual numbers. Do you want to, do we want to look at a number? I know that's around early year bailiwick, Jen, but you did work a lot of the numbers with us for the total revenues and so on. Do you want to? Rick, you want to go over that, or Lynn, or not, Lynn, excuse me, apologize, Joyce or?
Jen can. Come in. I said, I'll start and Jen can come in.
Okay.
If we sell the bags, if people don't use them up this year, they got them for next year. I mean, the permit price itself. We can lower them. Sell them the bags. So their, the permit would only have to cover everything else at the transfer station, not the solid waste.
Right, recycling bulky waste and so on.
Your general permit can go down, then the purchase of the bags will cover the. Solid waste plus the cost of the bags and stuff.
You feel that's more palatable?
Excuse me?
You feel that's more palatable? You feel that's more palatable that or I just, I I wondered if it made sense to have a certain number of bags included in with the permit.
Well, the original this year, we're gonna do that, so. The way Jenna had the setup on the the orange colored sheet there.
Yeah.
If that and then buy additional bags, but if you buy additional bags, you're gonna be able to carry them over to the following year, as long as we stay with the same colors, but uh, so we would have to either make adjustments the following year for to renew the permits at the same price, but give the whole box of bags again, or we can lower the permit fee itself and then sell bags as they needed them.
And you'll have a whole twelve months worth of data on a mandated program to better base that decision upon, Rick.
Right. I mean, people are gonna have to get used to putting everything in bags. Now they just throw a lot of stuff in there loose, but otherwise we're gonna have to still be there constantly charging, which this is trying to get us away from handling money every transaction, I would think.
Yeah, so we looked at the the small volume, which would be more senior level, you know, the number of bags. Um, and medium volume, those amount of bags, and then large volume kits, which would also include the thirty two uh, gallon bags and so on. Um, for contractors or, you know, wood shop workers or whatever, my garage, things like that. So it actually, there's no real permit for for the, and the twenty five, twenty six proposal, that one, the orange one, there's no permit fee upfront, or just for the permit itself, you get the bags as part of that, and that, so that's exactly what you pay. Uh, would be for the bags and everything else would be included in that cost of the bags.
Could we start that in twenty four? I don't understand why it says twenty five.
It was just, it was just, it was just, we thought we might move into it, but then we just didn't change the type. But yeah, I just use it, I said, keep it because I didn't know the colors, I didn't want to identify it differently, because the bags are all the same. But yeah, instead of doing a a permit fee and then a a paper bag and so on, we thought we could go with a different size kit, and we kind of looked at the number of permits again that came, you know, again, came within the senior realm or the whatever. We thought the senior designation, it doesn't really matter anymore, it's really how many bags you use, we should, you know, I mean.
Could be a single person who's twenty years old.
Exactly, yeah, and eats out all the time and never had any. Sixty, seventy, I don't know. Uh, but yeah, but that kind of stuff, so that it keeps, again, it's the fairness piece that I know we're all concerned, but but also actually, the use as you go, pay as you go, um, kind of deal. And that extra, you know, bag, it actually is a rolls of thirteen and and the cost would be there for for extra, if you wanted to at the last minute and needed extra the roll or whatever. You know. Different to party weekend, whatever it might be, or you, and end of the year, you find yourself running out of bags or whatever, you can still purchase them. And the cost of the bag itself, the, we did, looked at the different types of bags and and came up with the U line versus the um, zero net, um, uh, yeah.
Net two.
Net zero bag was, which was a little less.
So the ones you guys agreed upon, does it have a stamped label of town of Kent, because that was a concern that Rick had.
Right, that was not a concern, that we didn't call, um, call that out yet, I don't know, Jen or Tiffany, if there's, I mean, some have done that, you said, there's, others have done that, some had a stamp.
Yes, sir, the the town of Newtown is a branded bag that has the town seal on it in the name. Um, the the cost involved in that was maybe a penny or or two per bag. So it wouldn't meaningfully change the cost of a roll of bags. Um, we can certainly do that, and we do believe that we could get a branded bag printed by um, you know, the July first start. Um, so as far as executing, I think we thought at one point we wouldn't know if we were executing in time for a twenty four, July first start, but we believe we can get those supplies um, produced and shipped in that amount of time. And those figures are not hard figures, if you recall, Marty. If you all make this decision as this is the way that you want to go, we would certainly dive deep into seeing where we can get you the best deal.
Right, right, exactly, yeah, so there's still, you know, some.
Whoa.
Just a time. They're moving.
Motion detector, so Rick, would you prefer to have the branded bags in a perfect world?
Yeah, I mean, otherwise we run the risk of people just buying the same color bags somewhere.
I think it's hard to do.
Or buy them from U line, you can buy them from U line too, so.
Only a few pennies.
Definitely easier for us to identify if they have the town logo on them or something, so. Uh, even people buy those the seniors or whoever buys a small volume kit with the smaller bags, they could still have the option of buying a roll of the larger bags, so they don't have to, you know, buy the bigger kit to start with.
Right.
Correct.
So we just have to order enough ahead of time that we're gonna well, the different sizes available.
And we can do follow up orders if we find ourselves.
Right, and right now we've identified the thirteen gallon, which is what they've gotten this year, and the larger thirty two gallon as the two options, but you know, this coming year, if we decide there needs to be a third option, we can certainly add that for twenty five, twenty six.
Okay.
All right, make some.
I think we should throw the third option in there as a per roll. The larger, the forty five or fifty gallon.
We can go, yeah, there are, that we can do that as well, right?
Sure.
Right.
Do you want us to price that out for now?
Yeah, I would put that in there, because there's gonna be a lot of like the styrofoam, say, that people aren't, uh, want to break up, but it's gonna need a larger bag to get it into it.
Okay.
But just give them the option of buying. I don't know how many will be in a roll when you get that size, whether it's ten or only five, fifty, I don't know.
Okay, we'll get that data for you. We'll get that.
The third bag, the third bag option, third size option. Okay.
And and Rick, I remember we talked about where they should be sold, should, do you, you still want them to be available in ACE and I G A? If we can arrange that as well as the transfer station?
Uh, that's something we're gonna have to try and work out with them. I mean, they're gonna want something out there for selling them.
Right.
And
Can you?
Find out with the, if they can be tax exempt if they're sold there, because we aren't charging sales tax on them when we sell them there. Maybe most of A, but we haven't looked into that.
Well, if they're municipal use, I think we can get the taxes if you have done it, but um, hey, Joyce, can, are you on, can you? Hold for a second. We talked a little bit about the how we would roll, you know, potentially roll that out, I mean, just do it here in the town hall, uh, we could do it at, you know, uh, up by, um, and out for the town hall during the weekends or whatever, we could, we could actually work, you guys could all help me in some way. Spend an hour or two, so, I mean, but we could make it available at that point, uh, you know, and and not necessarily have to use ACE or um, or I G A and so on, not that.
For the actual, like the first rollout.
First rollout, see and and see how it goes, and if we have to, you know, uh, go to them and say, hey, we need some help, whatever, we can do it, but initially roll out, especially if people sign up, because it's six hundred and eighty eight, I think was our total number in that range. Um, I think we, you know, those people are going to be actively involved, we're going to be educating them. Uh, we can do it over, depending again on how long it takes to deliver the bags right to, we can get, you know, that developed and and actually implement it for a week or two before, even into the middle of July, we can, you know, probably work that out, which is not going to be a big issue, but the transition will be important to get people done, and I think if we concentrate on it, we could probably do the initial one ourselves and see if there's a, you know, continuing, that way, yeah, and that way we're not.
They have to, it's more than just the bags, they have to pay for the permit.
Correct, the whole thing, right, they have to come through.
The package.
The whole package, yeah. Thing at that point, and then we have to register them and so on, so we know exactly who they are, yeah. Now, yeah. So. Okay.
Can we, can they register online, is it, or is that complicated, too, still too complicated?
Well, get the bag, you register online and bring a ticket in, saying that you registered online, you're the right person, I I don't, I think first time, let's see, because we get a register and we give them the bag, at that point, it's a lot easier to to do that direct transition, transaction, instead of having someone, I tried to get ahold of you, you came three times and there was nobody there, or whatever. Uh, I don't know, uh, but what do you think, Joyce, about online, uh, you know?
Yeah, I think initially I agree with you.
Initially, she agreed with me. But it, you think we can handle it, we get the the right amount of team, I mean, I know it's a lot of pressure, I knew we'd done it before. Uh, Tip, you guys did it last year when you rolled it out, you guys did it at the at the transfer station, we could probably put together a whole plan to do that. But, you know, I know Joyce is usually, it it, you know, normally falls right on top of your head to make sure that the the process rolls out uh, every year, um, so on, so. As long as you think we can do it, Joyce, and she's not gonna answer me. Or is that, should I get to answer me? Okay.
Tiffany, do we know how long it's gonna, like a guess of how much it'll take to get these bags delivered?
Um, we had them within three weeks last year, from the time we ordered them to, we had receipt of them. Um, I think Rick remembers they were sitting up in his garage for a while, and we brought in some, um, uh, you know, waste zero interns to help us prep them, and you know, we relabeled them to have town of Kent labeling on them and put together the instructions about the program and how it works. Um, we did have some learning about how receptive people are to also getting a food scraps kit. Some people have used it, some people have turned them back into, uh, Rick, as you know, so that's also another point of engagement, um, we can certainly offer that. We definitely, we already have the supplies to support that for anyone interested. Um, what you might want to consider this year is whether you will charge for them to get another roll of the bio bag liners. Um, most of our other food scraps programs do charge, they don't give them away, but we had the leisure being able to do that because we had it underwritten from the pilot funds, and we can certainly do that again for another year, because we do have the pilot funds.
You know, one thing we might want to think about, and I I would volunteer to do this, is is see if we could have a booth, uh, uh, farmer's market.
Yep.
And, you know, to explain, to give out information and and explain it before it launches.
That is a good idea. Yeah, right, I would do that.
That's an excellent idea, Lynn, and we do do that in um, several other of our towns that have food scraps programs, and it does reach the people that are using it, that would definitely um, be more prone to use it.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, it's good. This starts in June, right?
Uh, no, they're actually starting May seventeen.
Oh, are they?
Fridays, three to six.
Friday, three to six. Perfect. Right before the town?
Yeah, well, yeah. Don't get your, uh, your veggies and your.
But but starting, but having it ready by the June, um, yeah, we could have that, it it's part of it as well. Or or before then, obviously, whenever we get it, so, um, okay, so, um, going forward, the first thing we need to do is get that letter out, um, and so we can get that by the fifteen and get them in, so.
Option.
So we can take, so, we can, we can make the motion to go ahead and do that now, uh, and make a motion, we can work the details, I mean, a lot of that is going to have to be, you know, work, but with this the oversight, we have to form a correct motion, but, um, we can do that. All right, so, really, did you, did you write a motion?
I did, but I couldn't find it.
Okay.
I think, um, I I'd make a motion that we implement the save as you throw program outlined on the this proposal, I don't know how to refer to it, that has a small volume kit for seventy five dollars, the medium volume kit for a hundred and fifty dollars, large volume kit a hundred and seventy five dollars, organics only for twenty five dollars, transport toters for ten dollars, um, extra thirteen gallon bags by roll for nineteen fifty, extra thirty two gallon bags per roll by thirty nine dollars, and also add a larger sized bag of forty to fifty gallon bags by roll. I think that's all we need to say.
I I'm sorry to interrupt, Jen, would the pricing on the toters at the carry containers stay at ten?
Uh, I know they've gone up in price to twelve, I I'm I'm also, I that number might change to twelve dollars, that's, that's our actual cost, we lose money at ten. Um, they actually cost us twelve dollars and five cents.
Okay, so we'll change that number to twelve.
Your, your motion is not just choosing the type of system, but to, you're also including what you're deciding your your price points will be today. Um, so I would say if that is part of the motion, it would should be twelve dollars.
Okay.
Okay. And those, go ahead, go ahead, Tip.
I was just gonna say, if you have not had a chance to really think through if those are the correct price points, we do not have to put details like that in the plan for permanency, we can keep it, you know, broader without the specific price points. So if you want more.
I think it's important for the people to understand that it's gonna be different. There's gonna be different options, and they should know about about how much it's gonna be, so.
Yeah, but I, and I agree, Lynn, and this is what we were talking about the other day, I agree with, I understand what you guys need is a little more broader, but I think we're gonna need specificity to be able to market it to the town.
Okay.
Exactly, what is that, so that's, that's our, that's what I was saying the other day, could be our responsibility to to figure that out, and if we're ready to go, and if Rick and 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 Joyce, who have looked at the pricing and so on, if this, these are the the pricing we can do right now, I don't want to get us into a where, oh my God, it's gonna be more, I don't think it's gonna be where we talked, Jen, you went, we said to a lot of pricing the other day. Um, if this is the good price points, then then we'll firm up that motion. Um, and we can hit both the letter, obviously, and and our and our program to go forward, um, so. Unless you have any other adjustments, we're gonna go ahead and 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 firm up this motion, and then we can action again.
Sure, thank you, thank you for letting me interrupt.
That's okay, no, no, we're still firming the motion, we hadn't formalized the motion yet, so, um, yeah.
We're good on all the other costs, Jen? The cost of the bags and stuff?
Um, the, well, the cost of the bags and the, in the option that you're looking at, that does say twenty five, twenty six, but would be small, medium, large volume. The price of the bags of U line prices, that is not the waste zero price with the um, entrance on it. So you would have to change that to from forty cents to forty two cents and from twenty four cents to twenty seven cents.
So do we want to then rework the numbers to reflect the extra few cents per? You had that, Jen had that working, like, dump it on her, but.
The numbers, your, your expenses on the large bags come to four thousand, seven hundred and twenty five dollars. Your cost, and tell me if you need a minute for that. Your cost on the thirteen gallon bags are twenty seven cents, come to nine thousand, three hundred and ninety three dollars. And then if you want the, your revenue over expenses with a different reduction in waste, I can give you that. I don't know if that's an important number to you at this point.
All right, so, but if we're gonna add the forty five gallon bags, or I don't know if that, that's, is that's a bag number, it's not a thirty, or well, we do thirty two gallons, so it's not a fifty gallon, a forty, could we do a forty, do you know any of those numbers, Jen, of hand? What U line does?
I would. Uh, well, I know, I know what U line offers, so it might be within a few cents of, um, bear with me, I just need to switch screens, I have, I actually ha- happen to have it on my computer, there it is, it is, um, all right, um, fifty five gallon active map, hang on. They give me a case price, so the case price would be interesting enough, um, well, you get a lot, you don't get as many in a carton, okay, so a carton is a hundred versus two hundred and fifty. So if you get a hundred. If you get a hundred. There with me, one hundred. Sixty-six dollars, it looks like it's sixty-six cents.
That's fifty-five gallon, you said, right?
That's a fifty-five gallon, well, they're calling it a forty-five to fifty-five gallon capacity. That's what they call it, but it's a fifty-five gallon bag, and it comes to sixty-six cents a piece. Um, that's your, that's your cost.
And how, how do we?
Large volume.
Yep, but i- uh, are they in roll of ten, roll of?
They, well, it's just telling me that a carton is a hundred, they, they're not telling me what the roll is, and this is U line price, I'm gonna say that. Um. The waste zero price might be sixty-eight cents. With the.
Line would probably be better off sticking with you.
We need, if we are branding it, we have to use the waste zero, right? Did I understand that correctly? If we wanna brand.
It's cheaper to go through waste zero to brand them.
Cheaper for waste zero. So would you quote it forty-two for, um. Forty-two cents for the, um. Yeah, thirteen gallon and.
I don't know, twenty-seven, so twenty-seven cents a bag for the thirteen gallon and forty-two cents a bag for the thirty-two. And then sixty-eight, fifty-five.
And that's all waste zero?
Yeah, correct.
Gotcha.
But we don't know how, how, how many bags for the fifty-five gallons, so we don't know how much.
Yeah, it comes in a carton, so we. I guess we could just pull them out, this is where it gets into, where we store.
A hundred in a carton, is that what I heard you say, or a hundred?
Yes, a hundred per carton. Not, that's from U line, if they come from waste zero, they're likely to come in those rolls of eight. Or thirteen. We'll have to come back to you with the, the exact numbers, I apologize, I I was not prepared for that question.
Yeah, I know, I appreciate that, um, um. Well. Look at this one again.
You don't really need it for that.
No, we don't, and I wanna make sure of that, so. We can take. Then we could do, um, make a motion to to accept the.
I might have touched.
Um, but we can do the, the, the letter with the option one, and then, um, we can actually. Wait till our March or our May meeting and actually do this then, and we have all the numbers laid out and all the costs and so on, if you want. I mean, I'd like to do it now, but if we don't really have the cost, if you're willing to do as. As prescribed, and just tell them we're gonna have a thirteen, a thirty-two, and a forty-five to fifty gallon. Program that will be.
I'm fine approving it, and you guys fill in the details, are you okay?
I'm okay with that as well.
Yeah, I'd much rather you guys feel the move forward with it.
Okay, well, that's, that's what I was wondering, yeah, like, wait, if you need that specific, but if you're ready to accept the program overall, we can do the details and then report it back on the meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree, I'm ready to accept, but but we do need the exact figures for everybody, so, um, okay.
So everybody again knows within a week, but we can now move forward. Okay?
No, I'm okay with that.
Rick, are we good with that?
Yeah, you, there is one question in the chat, they asked if.
Okay.
If you only bought the large kit, then your cost is gonna go up per year to use the transfer station, but. If that's the only kit you buy, or. Buy a smaller kit and then a partial roll of large bags. It'll be priced according to that.
Right, exactly, the flexibility would go to smaller, and then add a few others if you're really gonna go in between, you do have that option, right, you're not, yeah.
The whole object of this whole system is to try and. Get equity in what people are actually throwing away as far as weight and volume, so.
Yeah, because somebody could, they could buy the large volume kit, and then they could get an extra bag of thirteen gallon. You know, a roll of thirteen gallon bags, you know, they'd be covered.
I also think it's important to point out that the thirty-two gallon bags are nearly twice the cost. Um, to, to purchase than the thirteen gallon bag, although it's double the size. Um, there's a cost to be considered there to the town. In, in addition to the weight of the bag, which is the disposal and and the cost of the town. You're, you're still paying, you're paying for what you're throwing away. And you have options.
I'm sorry, we have, yeah, we do, exactly, you have options, you have options for different sizes, different kits and so on.
So, a friendly amendment to my motion, just as described on this. Page with the final details of the large bags. To be added, and and will be clarified by the first selectman's office.
Right, yeah, well, that would be updated and clarified.
Yeah.
For.
Alright, that's the motion, I think.
You have that motion, do you understand that?
There's a delayed.
Motion is to accept the save as you throw program for, a- as, um, marked as a twenty-five, twenty-six proposal. For small volume kit, medium volume kit, large volume kit, with thirteen, thirty-two, and forty-five to fifty gallon bag rolls. Extra, uh, with cost to be, uh, defined by the first selectman's office, total cost to be defined by first selectman's office.
But it is gonna be for twenty-four, twenty-five.
Correct, yeah, right, to start one July, to start one July, yeah, yeah. Yeah, we can, we can call this anything we want. Let's call it, make it a twenty-four, twenty-five proposal, okay? Twenty, twenty-four, twenty, we can just change it. Okay, so it's the save as you throw program, cost projections, coded twenty, twenty-four, twenty, twenty-five proposal, uh. No deep funding bags included with the transfer station permit, for a small volume kit, medium volume kit, large volume kit. Organics only, transport toters, extra thirteen, thirty-two, and forty-five to fifty gallon bags. Um, with the appropriate cost to be, um. Confirmed by the first selectman's office.
So we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Okay, any more discussion? Oh, very, all in favor? Okay, good, and so what we'll do then, um. Make the motion to send the letter to deep, um, with option one, uh, which outlines the. The save as you throw program that we just approved, um, as Kent's submission to deep. So moved. Second, great, thank you, uh, with the, with the requested amounts in there too, but sure, that's a requested, that's not a. A firm amount that are part of, so, okay, just clarify that, any other questions, any discussion on that? Okay, all in favor? Okay, great. Thank you.
And Marty, I can send you a draft of that letter per what you've just decided today.
Good, thank you, I'll do that, and we'll get that right out, so.
Okay.
Thank you, Tiffany, Jen, thank you again, I hope your trip to Maine was. Good?
Yeah, thank you, Rick, it's important that you, you speak tonight.
Joyce, thank you, uh, you guys, yeah, H R A folks have been phenomenal, and that's, that's all over them. All over them, they've been wonderful, coming back and forth and and making themselves available, so, okay, uh, now we move to public comment. Any comment from the public? Any hands up that I don't see, Joyce, did you see anyone? Okay, seeing or hearing none, I move to adjournment. I moved.
Five thirty.
There we go, we are adjourned, five thirty.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, good job, guys, been good to work, you guys.